Motion by Mary, second by Steve to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Invocation. I don't think we have anybody here, so we'll just have a moment of silence. Eric, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and council, one thing I was going to say just before the meeting started, but encourage you to speak into the microphones. We've had audio issues and it's mainly just because we're not speaking directly into our microphones, unless you don't want to be heard, I guess, so.
No mumbling either.
Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything?
Well, I would just like to thank the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force and Hutchinson Police Department. Our neighbors are very happy today. We have one less people dealing drugs in our neighborhood, so.
That's good.
Like to recognize Enzi Whalen, just for the great career and role model that she's been over the years and hope that the season continues a little bit longer.
All righty. Mid-America Trails and Greenway Award Presentation by Randy Thorson, Outdoor Recreation Planner, National Park Service River Trails Conservation Assistant Program. Yes, sir. Good afternoon, yes.
Right here, there, Matt.
Yes, that would be great.
I used to be a barbershop, I am a barbershop singer, so I think I know how to project my voice, Matt. And I also was a playing director, I had a position like Matt, so I think I know the drill here. Hi, folks, it's really nice to be here today, and I know you have a pretty full agenda, so I won't be real long, I could be real gabby, but Steve knows that a little bit. My name is Randy Thorson with the National Park Service Rivers and Trails Program, and that's an outreach program that works with communities on rivers and trails projects. That's my day job. However, all of us that are in this line of work, and we had a discussion out in the hallway, we all have a passion for what we do, and I've been involved with a multi-state Midwest organization called Mid-America Trails and Greenways, Maytag is the acronym, and it stands for, it's nine states in the upper Midwest. And every two years, they have a big conference, they get together, lots of sessions, there's communities, states, local governments like you folks, interest groups, a lot of DNRs there, and it's really a great conference. This last one was in Columbus, Ohio. They move it all around the Midwest. And every two years, they put out a call for exemplary projects in their respective nine states. And to make a short story long, a long story short, when they asked me, because they know me, and they said, "How about Minnesota?" And so I was thinking, and I got ahold of Brett, who Steve knows, from Parks and Trails Council, and I said, "You know, we need to put our heads together and come up with a project, man, so that we can bring to this conference." So we had discussions back and forth, and what we, both of us unanimously agreed on was the Loose Line Trail is a very exemplary project that I know about it. I used to be a West Sider. I'm living Stillwater now, but I was a West Sider in my formative years. I hope you can accept me on the West Side here. But, so I know about the Loose Line Trail. I know the history of Loose Line Trail. I used to work for the railroad when I was in college. I know the rail's a trail story, and Loose Line is a success story. And so the more we thought about, we said, "This would be great for me to go to that conference and present that as an exemplary project for Minnesota." And there's, keep in mind, there's about 500 people at these conferences, they're huge, and it's pretty cool when they get together and give these awards. Well, who are we going to talk to relation to this Loose Line? Well, we all, Steve Cook. So I talked to Steve, and I said, "Steve, you know, what do you think? I think the Loose Line Trail would be a great project with building partnerships, the history, the great things you folks have done up along the whole corridor, which I know about. Would you please write up an application for this award?" Well, he decided to do that, and I hit him with something else, and I, well, that's, isn't just that, Steve, is also, we'd like to recognize a person that's been involved in the project. Well, we talked that over, and again, we circle back to Steve Cook, which you all know, which Steve has been the forefront of that trail project for many years. So I'm here very pleasantly today, and there's some people out in the audience here that are involved, so I've been doing this, I'm retiring next month, I've been doing trail stuff for, planner for forty-seven years, I think I deserve a little off time here, but I know trails like this just don't happen, right? You know, and it isn't just that one person, Steve's a humble person, and I recognize that, but you need some guiding force on projects. You need someone that has the energy that sticks through thick and thin, and that's Steve. He wrote up a real nice, you know, I had to put his ego in the back burner, I made him write up a real story about himself, we submitted, we wrote up the Loose Line Trail Project. There was boards, and I think you found electronic, did you ever find those? I was trying to look for them today, and if you can't find them, I'll get to them. They put a real nice board up there in these vendors, keep in mind, four or five hundred people are milling around, and there was a real nice board that said Minnesota Projects, and there was a Loose Line Trail with a really nice story about that, that was one board. Another board was a picture of Steve, made him submit a picture to me, and there was a picture of him, about the project champion. So I'm very proud here tonight, without getting too much more gabby, but I drove all the way from Stillwater, so you guys listening, it's too far to drive and not say anything. So I'm here to present two awards, and I'd like to start with the project award, and it's very proud to say that, and you folks give any recognition you want to whoever, but feel very proud of this award, and it's called the Maytag, it's a Columbus, Ohio, 2018 project award for the whole state of Minnesota, Loose Line Trail, and I think that deserves a round of applause. And then also, the award is for Steve, for another round of applause for the champion of that trail, if we could give a round of applause for that. Now, I got to get back, because I have another commitment in Stillwater, so I got to race back. I'm not sure I'll have time for supper or not, but we'll see.
Why don't we get a picture?
That's right, I'm going to say, could we please, I hate to take that precious time or me, because can we please get a picture, you decide, Steve, all of us in here, and I think Melissa was going to take it, out of your cellphone, because my camera, okay, good. Can we do that? Oh, is there any comments, by the way? I'm sorry.
Quick clarification, Randy. No, I've been on, I've ridden on the Loose Line numerous times, and when I'm in the, you know, Y-Zeta area, people call it the Luce Line.
Luce Line.
So is it an Italian railroad line?
I know what leche is, and that means milk in France, but I don't, this is the first time I heard that. What'd you call it?
The Luce.
Luce Line. Okay, well, you put that little symbol above any letter you want in that word, and we'll see how it goes. But that's, are there any other comments? I just want to congratulate you folks.
So are we going to hear a little bit from Christie or not?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you folks.
I think so.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, thank you. No, you know, Randy hit the nail on the head when he said Steve was the, kind of the guiding force for this project, so.
Well, you're pretty modest, too. You're working hard at it, too, so.
No, it was, it was a great group project, and the city of Winstead and Silver Lake also contributed, and the county, McLeod County, and of course, the city of Hutchinson, so I think it's really deserving of the project award, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. I think one of the things we stressed in the application was the partnership and the financial contributions, but also, this was the biggest trail project the DNR had done in over twenty years, when you think of twenty-some miles consecutive, so, so that alone is very significant scope for the project, and so it's been a success.
Well, that's about it for me. Thank you very much. I wish I could say this came with like a $200,000 grant.
Since the mayor from Winstead came all over, maybe we should hear a little bit from him. Well, Christie would give me the look if I wouldn't make, put you on the spot, too.
I thought I could come to a council meeting once and not say anything. The thing I took away from this, besides Steve being the champion, and we've spent a lot of time on this, as a community, the partnership, I think, was very important. It tied the cities of Winstead and Silver Lake and Hutch, not only together, but with the county and with the DNR. And had we not done that, I'm sure we wouldn't be looking at the trail anywhere near where it is today, so we're very appreciative to be part of that partnership, and the honor that you're getting, Steve, is well deserved, and had it not been for you championing the cause, I don't know how far we'd be. Sometime you are a pain, but. I'm just saying. Are we going to end on that note here? Can we get a quick group picture, and then I got to take off. Steve, can you gather the, and Christie, folks, whoever?
Where do you want us?
I don't care, you choose. Probably up here somewhere, but the council thing in the background will be good.
We'll be able to find all the way to Winstead, asphalt, pretty soon. That'll be great.
Want you to hold both of these up in the center. Christie can. Very good. Thank you, folks. Congrats. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Christie.
Do you know him? Citizens addressing the council. Approve the minutes, regular meeting minutes of July 24, 2018, and the workshop of July 24, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, it'll be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is consideration for approval of improvement project change order. Change order number one and two, letting number one, project number 18-1, Century Avenue Southeast Reconstruction. Change order number two, letting number six, project number 18-6, 2018 Street Seal Coating. B is consideration for approval of items for the South Central Drainage Area Improvement. Phase one, project letting number five, project number 18-05. Under there is resolution number 14929, resolution ordering preparation of reports on improvements. And resolution number 14930, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearing on improvements. C is approval of payment of Century Avenue Southeast Temporary Easement Rate Compensation. Approval of out-of-state travel for Eric Killian to attend the National Tactical Officer Association Law Enforcement Operation Conference and Trade Show in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, on September 16 through the 21, 2018. He is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling license to St. Anastasia Catholic Church on September 9, 2018. Approval of issuing temporary liquor license to St. Anastasia Catholic Church on September 8 and 9, 2018. Approval of purchase of annual bag film order for Creekside. H is reappointment to boards and commissions. We have Steve Johnson to the HRA Board till August of 2023. Greg Jaziel to the Public Arts Commission until 2 August of 2021. Jack Sandberg and Gerald Grandy to the Public Library Board till April 2021. Tim Peterson, Marla Saif to the Price Board till August of 2021. I is the claims and appropriation and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
Question on B.
All righty.
Make a motion to approve the balance.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Steve, B.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted, I'm still okay with the project, but, you know, as we talked about, but do have some questions just with the loss of the fields, and just wondering, I know we set money aside for improvements of some of the existing fields to make them more versatile for use, but at the same time, I know this year was kind of a challenge with the weather that we had, and, you know, we're losing four fields, so we'll still have two fields on the south side, kind of for T-ball, right? But just wondering if there should be looking at some additional fields with the master park plan to help cover that, or we've looked at that real good, I guess. Part of it's just, you know, practices is one thing, tournaments are another, and, you know, all that, so.
Yeah, and we, you know, as we went through the exercise, I guess, beginning last fall, when the quarter of a million dollars was identified, one of the first focuses we looked at is what do we have participation? And unfortunately, we have declining participation in both adult programming and youth programming, girls softball and youth baseball specifically, so it really kind of helped us determine what we needed to do to move forward, and we were very confident at the time that the four fields reduced to ultimately two at Linden would be able to meet community needs. Now, through the parks' master planning process, there'll be a reevaluation of all of the activities that we provide, both from a public green space perspective, to a field perspective, to a facility perspective, and one of the other aspects they're going to look at is from a programming component as well. So we'll understand at the end of that process where we might be short, where we might have excesses, it'll be, you know, kind of a full-throated approach to, you know, what the community might need on a going-forward basis. But based on the current information that we have, in terms of ball fields, we feel pretty confident that we're going to be able to meet the community's needs, at least in the near term. Now, I understand our staff, it's always problematic for scheduling, because quite frankly, not everybody gets everything they want.
That's, and they're the ones who are the first.
Oh, yeah, no, hey, I know, and that's, that's how they feel about it, is, you know, they'd like four extra fields, and I'm more of, are we utilizing the facilities we have to their highest best function? We are making some significant improvements to all of those facilities, so we're hopeful that the playing surface is going to withstand the potential abuse that they might have. The biggest thing that happened to us that was positive was being able to play potentially under the lights out at a Roberts Park. You know, adult softball used to be a four-night-a-week proposition, now it's a two. So we slid girls fast pitch in on one of the nights, youth baseball in on the other night, there you get four-lighted fields, which just really expands the, kind of the calendar for everybody's benefit.
Thanks, Dolph.
So it's that, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it. Motion by Steve, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda number two, claims and appropriation, contract payments, register B. Chad, you have a check on there, correct?
I do, I abstain.
All righty.
Move to approve, register B.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Mary, with Chad abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. No public hearing, communication, request petition, unfinished business, new business. Gateway Park Concept.
Mayor and council, in front of you tonight for consideration is, I guess you'd want to say, plans and costs for the Gateway Park project, which would be the land that's currently vacant to the north of the mural on Main Street. This was first brought up back in October of 17, I know, by council member Cook, and November of, November of that same year, the council did authorize staff to begin putting together a plan, which has kind of taken place over the, roughly the past probably eight to 10 months. And so in front of you tonight for consideration, I guess, is a layout of that plan, and then a rough cost estimate. We're still waiting on an estimate regarding signage, so if it's something that you, you were to consider, I'd recommend that either you put a price range in there for a limit, or you set a, I guess, a specific cost limit on what you'd like to see spent. But just to briefly kind of review the project, it would include a paved walkway with a seating area that would be paved, and also include an umbrella there for shade, along with several plantings throughout that area, and then we're also in the process of working on what you call basically a walking mural, that would describe the painting of the mural that's currently up on the north side of the building, and kind of give some explanation to the individuals that have been painted with on that, or on that.
I like the plan. I think it looks good. I like the signage that will go with it. I've had a lot of people ask me about the mural, like, what did, what did those people do for our, for our area? So I think if we have a definite signage on what those people did and their accomplishments within our city, it's good for everyone.
Yeah, and that's, I think, you know, from the review that I did, and I did run it by family members, or if they're not around, representatives, like for Les Cuvas, the company that owns their copyright, and talked to Chief Hatton, and some others, but they all have interesting stories, and.
Totally.
People should know more about who they were and what they did, and I think layout, I know it's more than what we thought about it first, but it's beautiful, and it is a gateway into the community, and helps to encourage people to stop, and so I think staff did a great job on it.
You know, I'll just add a couple things, yeah, I would first have congratulated Dolph and Sarah, I know they did a lot of work putting this together. Secondly, it was identified in the downtown master plan as a, as a gate, Gateway Park. It was not included in the budget for this year, but we would. If you were to approve it, it would come out of community improvement fund dollars, which are set aside for projects like, like this, so.
Well, I think it'd be a great, great thing to have something to explain, like you said, Steve, who, who the people are and what they did for the community, so all for it.
My question was, we've got the fabric shade structure, was that supposed to just cover the circular center area, so people can sit in the shade?
Yes.
Dolph said that would be removed in the winter time.
Looked like it was a pretty strong structure.
Yes. I think that's a nice amenity, because there isn't shade down there, so it would be a nice place to go and sit.
Go well with the 2020 Highway 15 project.
Be this summer, but.
But that's what I'm saying, it'll really dolly up the road, you know.
And there's always a lot of people down there. I mean, whether they're fishing, or they're looking at the river, or just looking at the mural, it's, it's a well-used area, so it is a good amenity.
So you're looking for 35 for the price range, or the?
You know, if, if you wanted to authorize, I guess, a price range, or a not-to-exceed amount, I would think that's appropriate, however, I guess, comfortable the council is with. You know, I think we feel pretty comfortable with the estimates that we put in there, the one that we really haven't got a real clear cost on is that signage, interpretive signage, and they're just busy. It's basically the answer that they, they've given us, so.
And we've got to consider, you know, you're probably going to have, what, $500 in freight cost on the shade structure at least, I would think, so.
Make a motion to approve the park with not to exceed $38,000, give them a little cushion, in case stuff happens.
And second that.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to approve 38,000 for the Gateway Project. Any other discussion?
Can just thank Dolph to your staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Setting date for the annual city recognition event.
Mayor and council, obviously, we've done this now, and, well, obviously, on an annual basis, we've done our recognition event for employees, volunteers, committees, the council itself, and I've also used it opportunistically over the last couple of years to, to provide a state-of-the-city report, and so as we're looking at the calendars and the available dates of the event center, we'll be looking to do something on Thursday, October 25, with a check-in in Social Town, 5:30, buy a dinner, and then a state-of-the-city presentation.
Can we get to see a picture of Dolph with hair again?
You can see if I can find him. I've been told I've done enough ball jokes over the last couple of years, and I need to retire those, so.
Have you been working on your comedy stylings?
I've been thinking about it.
You know, we're, we're expecting a step up from last year, so.
I'm starting to run out of material, so.
I'm making a motion to approve the event on October 25.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to set the annual city recognition event for October 25. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Setting special meeting on August 17, 2018, to canvass the election results.
By. State law, we need to canvass our election results, I believe, within two or three days. The county is looking at doing it the morning of Friday, August 17, and they've, they've asked or suggested to the city that if we could do something after the morning meet, which is at 10:00 AM, and so we're really looking at, I suppose, any time after probably 11:00, because I think, Gary, you need to be a part of the.
Yeah, I got to be in the county.
You know, so really, anytime, you know, late that morning, early that afternoon would work, and I think we've all done this before, it's roughly five minutes, but we do need to get together to canvass those election results, so I guess we're just kind of looking at a time that would work for a quorum of the city council.
Could we do it right at 11:00?
Do you think you have enough time, Gary, to get back?
Yeah, it should, should be.
That's fine.
Or, or can we do it early, right? Or can we do it early, right away in the morning, Chad?
Or do we have to do it after?
We don't have to do it after. They just suggested, Gary, that we go up at ten, is all.
So we could do it at eight?
Could we do it at eight-thirty?
So...
That'd work great for me.
Do it at eight-thirty? Does that work for you?
Eight-thirty would be, I think, better for me, too.
Sure. Sure.
Saves part of the day.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for eight-thirty on the seventeenth.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by John, to do the canvassing at eight-thirty on the seventeenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Budget workshop for August twenty-eighth. Oops, I'm sorry. Yep, August twenty-eighth and September eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Obviously, mayor and council are in the middle of budget season, so as we've done in the past couple of years, looking to have you guys call two budget workshop meetings. The one on the twenty-eighth would be to review the preliminary capital improvement plan, and then the one on September eleventh would be to review the preliminary budget and tax levy. Both of those would take place at four o'clock.
Do you want to have done separate?
You can do it in one motion, just for you asking me to consider those dates in that time.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget workshops for August twenty-eighth and September eleventh at four o'clock.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad, to set the workshops. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Coverance minutes, reports in from committees, boards, or commissions, tall grass, noxious weed, report for June and July of two thousand eighteen.
John was busy.
Yeah, he was.
I did have a resident ask about some tall weeds on a development over on Alaska Court Northwest. So it's a development, but it hasn't been mowed all summer, there's a bunch of thistles in it and stuff, so...
I always encourage them either just to...
I think they had talked to John, I just wanted to kind of reiterate it, yeah.
Yeah, I know, there's, actually, if you look at it, I think it's, I'm not sure if that's the one, it's about seven.
Right down from the top of the list, there's one on...
Yeah, I... I don't know if that's it to her, but we can double-check that, so...
Staff update. Dolph, you have anything more for us today? Alright, Kent?
Yeah, quickly on the project front, Sentry, Phase One should be completed a week early here, the end of this week, so there have been paving today again, putting the workhorse down, so they'll be striping that and getting things in order on the signal system front. We won't have our permanent signal system in, but they relocated the existing one at this point, we're waiting on the mast arm for the permanent system, but we'll make do on that front. And yeah, it's a week early, so we're good with the college, and they're starting fall semester on Monday, August twenty-seventh. Bridge, lagging a little bit behind, but we're not doing as bad as I think what we thought. Looking to pour the deck the end of next week, the deck and the approach panels, so yeah, things are taking shape. Probably looking at the earliest that opening to traffic, probably Monday, September tenth, give or take, at this point, we anticipate. So obviously, we've been in contact with the school district, and it's going to impact their bus routing, but I don't believe it's a critical school bus route by any means, but probably impact a few buses. Pavement management program up in the northeast side of town, up on Spruce and Eleventh and Northwoods, we are removing trees currently this week, and then the roadwork, utility work will start next week. And lastly, trail, our little trail parking project out on Sherwood and down by the Fifth Avenue Bridge, that started today. So they did quite a bit of work down there on Sherwood, and they probably jumped over to Fifth Avenue this afternoon.
Yep, they went by there, by Oak's Park, they're really working on that, so...
So things are moving along. That's it.
Alright, thanks. Mr. Sabora.
Just one thing, if you haven't had a chance, encourage everyone to go out and vote yet today, I think the polls are open for a few more hours, so urge everyone to do that.
And then we, I saw that they had located the house up by the Wells, they were getting ready to demo that one?
I mean, on Fifth Avenue?
Yeah, on Fifth Avenue Northwest.
Right, yeah, I think the last I had heard, the building department was going out for quotes on the demolition, and so that should be happening.
I just noticed the locate there, so I assumed it was going to fall down pretty quick. I'm sure the people that bought the house to the east of it will be very happy.
Right.
That's good. Thanks, Mark. Chad?
I don't have anything else.
Mary?
I have two things. I had a citizen ask me about putting handrails on the bandstand, on the bandshell. They would like to get up there, but they have to have a rail to access the bandshell. They would like to sit up there, you know? And I guess I never looked at it that way, but, you know, it is a bandshell, and it is for everyone.
Is that the one at West River Park?
No, the bandshell, right in Library Square. Our regular bandshell. If you look at it, you know, when you walk up the stairs to it, you can't hold on to that, that's much lower. You know, they're looking for something to hold on to it. And they asked, and I said I would ask.
I guess building code would say if there's more than three risers, you're required to have a handrail, kind of grandfathered in, but...
Even though there's the southern...
Yeah, that's the...
Check it out with Dan Jokum and...
Right, okay.
It'd be the Uniform Building Code for existing structures.
Yeah, I'm just sure that plays up with the historic designation.
That'd be my question, too.
And the other thing is, the fair is here, it starts this week, so get out and support our county fair.
I guess two of us are going to do the dunk tank, huh? I was going to bring that up, but...
Yeah, there's a couple in the dunk.
I will be dressed as Martin McLeod, that's why I'm scruffy.
Gary, what are you being, what are you dressing up as?
I'll be wearing my costume. I'm always scruffy, but...
And I'll be taking tickets, and I'll be at the historical society booth, so that's it.
John?
Just update on the fountain, looks like it's all fixed, now it's on a timer?
Timer.
Okay.
Yes, after some fits and starts, it's fully operational. The timer goes on at eleven a.m., goes off at nine p.m., Monday through Sunday, on a weekly basis. The reason it comes on at eleven is just it makes the clock a lot easier to operate, because we have church services in the park typically almost every Sunday, and when the fountain's running, they can't hear the speaker, so we said we'll just have it go off at eleven.
And so the fix on that was about, what, twelve thousand bucks?
Well, it was over a two-year window, but almost twenty.
Twenty, okay.
It's made out of stainless steel, the previous one was copper. People would try to use it as a swimming pool. When it was copper, they'd hit the heads, they'd bust off, we'd drain the water, you had to do the welding. Stuff was paper thin, now the thing disassembles into three pieces. We think it's virtually bomber-proof, but I would not issue that as a challenge to anyone. And then we put a false floor in with a drain, so when the highway gets redone in two thousand twenty, we'll be able to evacuate the water into sanitary sewer, instead of just spitting it out on the earth.
So Dolph, the pump is outside?
The pump is still inside.
Oh, it is?
The electrical controls are on the outside. The previous configuration had the wiring all occurring underwater, and that was starting to cause some of our, we were throwing some stray voltage, and we just wanted to eliminate that, so all the electricity's on the outside, and the controls are on the outside, which we think is good. It used to have two pumps, now it has one. The old pumps were running at about twenty percent of their capacity. Now we're running at about sixty-five percent of capacity with a singular pump. So the other pump that we have, we'll use that as a reserve or some redundancy if we have an issue, and we think everything's working just fine so far. Each head has its own adjustment, the other one did not have that, it was either on or off, and then you controlled it by the pump. This is all valves, much more simplistic, and we think it's going to be built for the long haul.
That's good. Thanks, Dolph.
That's it.
So what time do you go in the dunk tank?
Well, if I, now my wife was questioning the schedule, but I think I am scheduled from eleven until one on Sunday.
Oh, you know, they said that, like, if I didn't show up, that the guy before me would have to keep going, so... I'm at one.
Well, I'm bringing two changes of costume, and then I was thinking that, I've got my Navy wetsuit, so I was thinking maybe that could be one of my costume changes, is wear my Navy wetsuit, too, so...
Well, I did it last year during the Halloween for the FFA, or the four-H.
A little cool.
Oh, my gosh. That was, yeah, and my granddaughter was the first one to dunk me, so she was happy.
In this, it's a kind of a fundraiser, because we're replacing the lighting in the parking lot at the McLeod County Historical Society, and so we've got a six thousand dollar bill there, and we're trying to fundraise to pay for at least part of that, that's...
So if you want to come out and get some politicians wet?
First shots, ten bucks, second shots, fifty. I think that's fair.
Thanks, Sean. Steve?
Just thing, I heard Mindot's coming back for Main Street, Kent, to talk to property owners about historic preservation, or talk to Jim Fahey about something the other day, and he mentioned that.
Yeah, I don't know if they completely have cleared the historic office. I think I do vaguely recall, yes, so they might be touching base with a few of them to determine, yeah, some historical aspects and what needs to be accounted for within their documentation. I don't think it's anything too serious by any means, going to impact the property, because we're stopping at the right-of-way line, you know, so it's basically to make the feds happy in the documentation.
School road traffic light, update on that?
Yeah, it might be on a wire for, same story as what we're dealing with out on Sentry. I mean, signal system, mast arms, poles, et cetera, controls, they are, the lead time on them are twelve weeks or so, is what we're hearing, so yeah.
Is that a steel issue, or...
I, I don't know if it's an industry issue, or, I mean, I think there's steel issues all over the place, but, but yeah, no, it's just that things have a long, lengthy lead time nowadays, and a lot of these things are basically, it's, they're fabricated to the inch, and then the signal, the light mounts have to be in a specific spot, and that mast arm has to be fabricated accordingly, so everything's basically special order. So yeah, no, I think school road, they were thinking it's going to be, yeah, it's going to be into October, November, or so.
Well, just thought I'd ask, since some others have asked about it.
Yeah, no, I mean, the system that's there is functional, and yeah, you know, Hennepin County's got those systems hanging on intersections with twice as much traffic as that intersection, and it's had them for thirty years, you know? Travel around Hennepin County, you'll see little things hanging quite a bit.
One thing on the trail, there's pretty good depression on the south edge of the trail, just kind of west of the dam area, I'm sure Dolph, you know, I mean, is that something we can work with Mindot, and it's kind of a hole that, you know, you'll see it if you go out there, but...
Okay.
I just thought if somebody would hit that, that wouldn't be good. And then the last thing I have, somebody asked me today, actually, you know, about, and I wasn't aware of this, that we don't have hockey boards up anymore. I said, well, don't we have them up in Northwoods? And they said, no, it's been a couple of years, so just wondering if...
Your rink, you're talking, Steve?
Yeah, yeah.
They haven't had them there for four years.
Four years? He said, well, there's been two for sure, and so is that, like, that they're not in good shape anymore, or...
They went through their useful life, so we disposed of them.
So they were asking if they were provided, again, if a group provided them, if that would be something that could be set up again?
Would provide them. And there just isn't a lot of call for, there has not been a lot of call, and nobody's really noticed that they've been gone for four years.
Kids aren't as tough as they used to be, Steve, they don't want to play outside anymore.
They've gone up, and they shoot the puck around, but then...
Oh, sure, and they still do that, we put, they just don't have boards.
Alright, well, dispatch seven?
Does the, do the rink attendants still keep attendance notes?
Yes.
Year to year?
Yes.
Is that something that's readily available, that information, or...
I could pull that together, yes.
Sure, I feel like next park board meeting, it'd be interesting to see it.
Are you doing that, with that, just that rink, or now also park?
The Park Elementary one is unstaffed, or staffed by volunteers, and that one is put together by volunteers, they do the flooding.
That's a neighborhood up there, right, Dolph?
There's a neighborhood interest. But I mean, we could certainly visit with the neighbors to find out what the participation's been.
But then, otherwise, the Northwoods one, then? That's all.
Thanks, thanks. Matt?
Just, excuse me, just a couple of things. Just a reminder, we do have our special EDA City Council Joint Meeting this Thursday at noon, that's going to be at the Enterprise Center. And just because I know the public's interested, the last day of the Aquatic Center is Sunday, August twenty-sixth, that'll be open for the summer, and then, Dolph didn't touch on it, but the master park plan's underway, and I guess one thing I'll note is that we're in the process to hand out note cards at the county fair to the public, because there'll be opportunities where we're going to be doing some, it's called social pinpointing, where people actually will be able to use social media to go in and provide comments on various different parks within our park system, and we're working on a page to our website, and we'll push that out on social media, but just kind of wanted to get that heads up, that we're hoping that the public becomes engaged in this process, so... That's it.
You mentioned the pool's last day, maybe this could be a good opportunity to announce what the end of that day is going to be.
And what, from five-thirty to seven, seven-thirty?
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
There's a fundraiser for dogs, and we're allowing the dogs to take over the...
The pool.
The pool. At least for this year, we'll see how it goes.
So that's Sunday, the twenties?
Five-dollar fee for the dogs to participate.
Per dog?
You can't send your dog along, I don't know, but...
Be licensed?
...seeds that are collected will utilize at the dog park for some type of doggy activities.
I was at the dog park on national night out, there were like twenty or twenty-five dogs down there that night, it was pretty neat.
It's been really good.
So Dolph, is it just in the, like, the kitty area, and the, or is it, it's not in the deep part, is it? Or where, or all over?
Yep, there'll be lifeguard, there'll be some staff there.
I'll be there.
The lazy, the lazy river will be running, too, we're kind of curious to see how that's all going to go with the dog.
You can go down the slide with your dog, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I don't know if you can go down the slide, you can go off the board, Gary, and we'll let you do a one-handed...
Zip line.
Zip line.
Yep, zip line.
Oh, maybe with Sadie, my little jack russell, but I think no, that's a little bit too big to hang on to.
So that was what, you had purchased the ten new double inner tubes, was that an anticipation? Was that in anticipation of the dog?
No.
All I have is that the fair's going on. I think there's a lot of, a lot of things going on out there. I think there's motocross, autocross, demolition derby, and tractor pull. And I know they have a few bands out there, I think, the white sidewalls. So those guys that like the back to the 60s will be out there and.
Johnny Hall.
Oh, Johnny, okay, that's.
I thought he was dead. I went to see him when I was in college.
Sounds just as good.
So what night is that, Melissa? Friday night? Okay, right after the autocross, then.
It starts around 8:00.
Yeah, autocross is at 7:00. So, yes, get out and vote today. Besides that, enjoy the weather. Germans in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by John to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.